Ladies and gentlemen, if you would join us. We've got our call to order this evening, public comments. We've got a constitutional proclamation. We've got the D A R ladies here.
If you'll meet me right here.
Start with the.
Do I miss her?
You didn't.
Yes, you did. Everybody sit still, we're gonna start all over again. All the order, if you would stand and join us with the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Lord, you are a good, good father. With this in mind, we pray for each and lift up our own local leadership for your blessing and gracious intervention. In appreciation of their service and responsibilities, we ask that you meet their needs and the needs of their families. Thank you that they serve the people of our city. I pray that you would give them strength to address the needs of our community. I seek your blessing and favor on Guthrie, Oklahoma. May we be an example and light to the communities around us in unity, cooperation, and seeking to help our citizenry. Thank you for your good and gracious favor, which you bestow willingly willingly on us as we seek you in prayer. Amen.
Amen. Kim, if we got any comments or anything. We do have the constitutional week proclamation, so ladies, if you'll join me up here, you'll have to forgive my shorts. I did not know I was going to be presenting this tonight. Mayor is unfortunately sick.
Oh, I hate that.
But if you want to come on up there and whip me all these to you.
Shall I bring all the ladies?
Oh. Do you want to take pictures from the west?
Absolutely.
We're all friends.
That's the best idea.
Best one of the neighbors talking.
All right, here we go.
Now get Jim, get Jim in there too.
Whereas the constitution of the United States of America, the foundations of our liberty and freedom, provides for a government that adheres to a democratic rule of law, and whereas September 17th of 2022 marks the 235th anniversary of the framing of the sacred document by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is appropriate and to do accord that the city of Guthrie and its mayor celebrate the beginning of American patriotism in spirit and remember those founding fathers who labored faithfully. And whereas, in recognition of the signing of the Constitution and the Americans and Oklahomans who strive to fulfill duties and responsibilities of our citizenship, the Congress will by joint resolution of February 28th, 29th, 1952, 36 U.S.C. 106, as amended, as amended September 17th as Constitution Day, and by joint resolution of August 2nd, 1956, requested that the President proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd, Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Jim K., Vice Mayor of the City of Guthrie, Oklahoma, declare that the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2022, will be recognized as Constitution Week. And that protects us to affirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution passed in 1787 by vigilantly vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. And witness there I, there am I, heretofore set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Guthrie, Oklahoma, to be a fifth to this 20th day of September, the year of our Lord, 2022.
Thank you so, so much. I'm being happy. All the San Joakim chapter members and our wonderful Guthrie people. We have wonderful Guthrie lovers.
Great.
Thank you.
Good job, Jim.
That's a lot of whereas's. Turn back on again.
Where your whereas is.
All right, he can send agenda. Approve the minutes of September 6th, 2022, Public Works Authority Meeting.
It's moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Place your votes.
All votes are in.
Vote is unanimous, motion carries. Item number four, Leroy has asked that we table that one for tonight, so that meeting is now adjourned. And we go on to the city council meeting. Called order consent agenda. All matters listed will be enacted by one motion unless a request is made for discussion by any council member or member of the audience, in which case the item will be removed for consent agenda, considered separately following this portion of the agenda. A, approve the minutes of the September 6th, 2022 city council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Place your votes.
All votes are in.
Vote unanimous, motion carries. Item number three, discussion on possible action to approve resolution number 2022 35 to authorize submission of a grant application to the United States Economic Development Administration, EDA, requesting funds to construct an Oklahoma State Certified Film Soundstage and further authorizing the mayor and city manager to execute any and all necessary documentation to complete the application process. Go ahead, Justin.
Thank you. Earlier this year, council approved for staff to submit an application to EDA ARPA funds. It's a lot of acronyms, sorry. That application was denied by EDA, but not because of the quality of the application. Basically, they just had too many applicants all over the country to fund everything. EDA encouraged staff to resubmit that application through their regular annual funding. The only change with that is that the the recommended cap for EDA funding is less on the annual basis than it was for the ARPA funds. So we went back with Mr. Blatter, architect, and tried to come up with a concept where we could scale back the cost of the project, still meet the state criteria for a certified film soundstage, and also cater to another recommendation that EDA gave us. They were really impressed with the partnership between the city of Guthrie and Meridian's Film Crew Institute. So they they recommended that we lean a little more into that collaboration. So with the concept that we were bringing back to you now, the the actual soundstage size, the filmable space, is decreased from what it was originally, just to save costs. We're still meeting the minimum standard, but we're also adding a second building to the complex. That's a it's a cheaper building, and Tony can describe this a little better than I can if you have questions about it. It's a cheaper building, but it adds a flex space to where the students at Meridian can use that building more. They can participate in this facility more regularly, even if there's a film renting the soundstage. The Meridian students can still be out there with class or even like working in conjunction with the film possibly. So that's kind of the change in the concept. The with the decrease in what EDA funds with this and still being able to have a concept that meets the requirements from the state and meets the recommendation from EDA about that collaborative collaborative aspect, what we have is a recommendation to apply for the the cap of funding through EDA, which is the $1.5 million grant. But in order to meet those other two criteria that we kind of put in place, the the city would have to match $2,085,163. So it's a bigger match on our part to make up for the fact that EDA wouldn't fund as much. That was kind of a lot to pack into a short period of time. I know Leroy has some comments to go along with that. Before I fasten him, any questions about what I just kind of went over?
Is this starting to be in the same location out the airport?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then will we like, if we have to come up with that kind of money, is there any other way we can get extra money, some other, some way other than what we're doing now? I mean, I know it's just not just stretching, I'm just asking.
I don't think we have any kind of funding mechanism as a backup at this point. We haven't gotten to Plan B for right now.
Where you gonna get the 2 million bucks?
From you. That's Leroy's presentation.
This will be good.
See if I got it. Our original concept, a couple of years ago or three years ago, we set aside 4.4 million of the three-quarter set CIP sales tax for industrial park. When these grant opportunities presented itself, if we could get grants, we could take that 4.4 and leverage it and do two projects, and that's where we're coming up with the funding. As Justin indicated, back in April, we had a debriefing with the representative from EDA on our two applications. They indicated both applications were sound applications, attractive. They just had more applications than they had funding. They recommended the city reapply for the soundstage funding in October of this year through their regular public works program. EDA was enthusiastic about the dual purpose of the soundstage, as Justin indicated, for workforce development as a learning lab for Meridian Tech's First Capital Film Crew Institute, and then from its job creation economic standpoint for film production. The industrial park, under the Public Works Assistance Program that we're applying for now for the soundstage, the industrial park would have to have a commitment from a newer expanding industry locating a park to receive the funding. Under the ARPA program through EDA, you didn't have to have a industry in hand, so to speak. So EDA is kind of out as far as a funding source for the industrial park. Also, we found out later on, since our talks in April, a good thing for our county is people move north and brings more wealth to our county. Programs like this are based on socioeconomic needs, and the more wealth, because everything is by census tracts. So the more wealth that moves into the southern part of Logan County, the more our socioeconomic status in those census tract goes up. So we're not even eligible to apply for another EDA grant at this point. The reason we can do the soundstage is because they're tying it to the education element. We are still working on the industrial park project. The Oklahoma Department of Commerce has reached out to us. They have funding to extend infrastructure and site development for industrial parks. They've asked us to update the cost estimate for our industrial park. The fact that we are willing to provide matching funds, they have said, makes our project very attractive. Some of the things in our discussions that are favorable towards Department of Commerce funding the industrial park is the historic lack of intermediate to large size industrial sites in the greater Oklahoma City area. Sites with existing infrastructure are exceedingly rare throughout the metro area. Guthrie is well situated in proximity to Interstate 35, which would allow ideal access for both employees and truck transportation. Guthrie's proximity to a population center offers several advantages to companies that are looking for an appropriate site. Over the last few years, our feedback from Department of Commerce and Oklahoma City Regional Chamber membership is they've lost some opportunities for job investment due to the lack of appropriate development sites. So I think we stand a pretty good chance on getting grant funding from Department of Commerce to do our industrial park. As Justin indicated, for the EDA soundstage, we're asking for 1.5 because that's a cap on this particular fund. We've reduced the size to accommodate the available funding. The soundstage would be 9,500 gross square feet with a soundstage of 7,500. And then we incorporated a 3,500 shop space structure with a more cost effective construction type. So our grant match would be 2,085,000, which would be 58% roughly of the project. Our cost estimate is 3,585,163. The scary thing right now in doing grants and projects is there's so much rapid inflation. You get a cost estimate today, two months from now, steel could double or concrete could double. So you try to build some fudge factor, but you have no idea what inflation is going to do over 12 months. The other thing is when we get grants, because you got to go through a Section 106 federal review for federal funding, there's a delay between the grant award and when you can actually start doing the construction bid documents to put it out for bids. So it's kind of scary doing grants right now. We've been fortunate on our projects, on the water lane along Division. The Department of Commerce was in a position, they give us an additional 600,000 to help cover part of the inflation, and we put part of the money in on the three new softball fields that we got a grant for. Of course, inflations add into those projects, but fortunately, our citizens pass the increase in the motel tax for ball fields, and so that will help us make up that difference. So we've been able to figure out by either doing value engineering and bringing the cost down or or tying other funds into it, and that's what we'll do with this project. If we use 2 million for this match, that still leaves us out of the original money we set aside in the CIP fund, 2.3 million for match for the industrial park that we still will have available. The I must admit, the film industry has been different this year. It it appears that the film office is looking more towards larger films, blockbusters. So they got a big film, and the films that we get a lot of, the 300,000 to a million, they're not supporting those as much right now. So they're going through growing pains, and we're trying to explain to them that the the smaller films, the 300,000 to a million, those are films that you can have multiple films that keep the crews going and working throughout the year. If you only hit home runs and you only get one every three or four years, you can't sustain the infrastructure. So we are trying to work with Department of Commerce to explain that, but but there has been a little bit of law in filmmaking, not just in Guthrie. And then the other factor is, of course, it seems like if you got a good thing, everybody else wants it, and everybody wants to be the film capital of Oklahoma. We're not ready to give that title up yet. But even if you look at it on the downside, the 9,500 square foot soundstage, our investment in that will be 1.9 million. So that's roughly $200 a square foot. The shop building, 3,500 square feet, will have about $42 a square foot in that. They're in an attractive location. A 9,500 square foot building with a 25 foot clear span and a 3,500 square foot shop building. Even on the very downside, if the film industry decides to leave Oklahoma, we will have assets that we can either use ourselves or lease or market to somebody else that we don't have now. And even at $200 a square foot, a 9,500 square foot building with a 25 foot clear span would be an attractive building. So even on the downside, I think we still come out a winner. Be glad to answer questions.
Anybody have a question?
One quick one. I think we were talking about this last or two, about the Native American. Will that slow us down if we were to get this grant? We'd have to go in and say that there's no cemetery here or no bones or anything like that.
It 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 could potentially slow us down, but now that we know the Osage Nation is the primary one that requires a cultural resource study, we can move faster on that. We're getting better at going through that process. We're doing that, just wrapping up the one on the softball fields. So we should be in the next few weeks turning our engineer to do the bid specifications for the softball fields. The OTRD grant along Highway 33 that takes the bridge over into the Elbow area. We just approved the contract to do that. So we're getting better at that now that we know that we're pretty much going to be required to do that. So I don't think that'll be as big a delay, but yes, we will probably have to do that. It's a more confined area, eight acres. It should be relatively easy to do, but probably looking at a $4,000 to $5,000 cost potentially to do it.
Anybody else? Consider motion.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Place your vote.
All votes are in.
Vote unanimous, vote carries. Motion carries. Item number four, discussion on possible action to declare Miss Land's Guthrie Fire Department Motorola radio equipment as surplus and authorize donating it to area Logan County Volunteer Fire Department.
Get up and answer to kind of cover the next two.
You snuck in on me, I didn't see you.
So you guys can remember last fall, we approved accepting a federal grant for $200,000 to $300,000. It in effect replaced the remainder of our older radio equipment. We now have all this stuff that is surplus that's been removed out of our trucks and checked in by our personnel. So it's still usable for now, once it breaks, it may not be, but it's still got some life left in it, and we just kind of wanted to pass the buck forward and help out our neighbors that work with us typically on a daily basis and help them kind of fill in the gaps in their communication shortfalls.
On the equipment, like, let's say you give it to Langston or Meridian or whatever, can they call in and talk to you guys?
Yes, it will greatly enhance our interoperability with communications.
That sounds great.
And all the departments have a little bit of those radios now, but they don't have them in every truck, and every person doesn't have one. So there's, like today on this fire, there's gaps, some trucks have them, some don't. So it'll it'll help fill those gaps in quite a bit.
Motion to approve that.
Second.
What's been made in second, any further discussion? Place your votes.
All votes are in.
Vote unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you.
Number five, discussion possible action to declare a Guthrie Fire Department 1996 Chevy $3,500 brush truck as surplus and authorize donating it to the Turlington Volunteer Fire Department in Pawnee County.
You mean 3,500 series truck, not $3,500.
I've seen, read what it said. It didn't say dollar, did it?
This is.
3,500 brush truck as surplus and authorize donating it to the Turlington Volunteer Fire Department in Pawnee County.
Those that don't know where Turlington is, it's kind of on the southwest corner of Lake Keystone, east of Cleveland. Pawnee County has no fire sales tax, and those guys literally live off pancake and bean suppers and donations. So they're really scrapping together equipment. We were having some repair work done, and some of their guys saw that truck. We were taking it out of service because forestry gave us a little bit newer truck to replace it. The city bought that thing in late 1995, and we've gotten our money out of it probably 10 times over. It's been, the frame's been bent, it's been straightened.
A motion to approve it.
Yeah, it doesn't have a lot of value. Nobody else in Logan County had any interest in it, so we checked here first.
Motion's been made in second, and any other questions, discussion? Place your vote.
All votes are in.
Vote unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Item number six.
Thanks, Eric.
Discussion possible action on a request for approval of a final subdivision plat for 60 residents of Locksland in the R1 Single Family Dwelling District for Hillcrest Farms located in part of the southeast corner of the northeast corner of South 41716, North Range 2 West, generally located at the northwest corner of Hillcrest Avenue and Pine Street, per App. 22-002.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. As indicated, this is a final subdivision plat. It's for 60 lots. It's located off of Hillcrest Avenue and Pine Street in the northeast part of the community. Back in February this year, the planning commission had approved. Back in February this year, the planning commission had approved the preliminary plat. They recently, at their September 8 meeting, recommended approval of the final plat. The final plat was consistent with the preliminary plat. This is just a, if you wanna say straightforward subdivision plat. It meets all of the required zoning from lot sizes to minimum width in the lots, minimum right-of-way, that type of thing, just like the other recently approved subdivision. This was, all the improvement plans were approved, reviewed and approved by Myers Engineering and our Public Works Department. So all of those are good to go. So at this time, it would be to approve it. The conditions, I'm not gonna read them thoroughly, but essentially, the conditions are they're gonna have to put up a bond. In this case, it'll be a 1 point, around $1.2 million bond, which would cover, in the event that they would not do, complete all of the improvements, water, sewer, street paving. Also, one of the conditions is, is that the final plat would not be signed by the mayor until all other parties have signed it, which is like the surveyor, the owners, the county treasurer, that. And then there's also a condition where they will have to have a two-year maintenance bond. So even when they do the improvements and those are done, there will be a bond on file. So if there are any issues with the infrastructure in that period and they don't want to deal with it, once again, we have the ability to go in there and fix it. And then the final one was just to where we won't issue any CFOs for any building until all of the improvements have been done and accepted by the city council. So with that, I'll give it back to the council if they have any questions.
I got a question.
Yes.
How am I supposed to place a motion on that? What should my motion say?
You're gonna just say motion to approve it?
What you can do is just make the recommendation to adopt the motion presented to you in the agenda.
Yeah, 'cause it's basically what I just said.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what the motion's gonna say, is what you just read, is what I was getting at. I'm sorry. Do you have placed a motion?
Yes, I have.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? Place your votes.
All votes through.
Votes unanimous. Motion carries. Item number eight, discussion, a possible action to authorize the purchase of three...
Seven, missed it.
I'm sorry. I'm reading number seven, but I'm saying number eight. Excuse me. I'm trying to get in a hurry, I guess. Discussion, possible action to authorize the purchase of three 2023 4x4 PPV Chevrolet Tahos from John Vance Fleet Services in the sub of $127,851.96 or $42,617.32 per unit pursuant to their quote number Q9435, utilizing Oklahoma State Purchasing Contract and authorizing the city manager's action to keep all agreements related to this purchase. Leroy?
You all had authorized earlier this year to put in for two new vehicles for the police department. It came to our attention that we had the opportunity to reserve three vehicles. The lag time between when you order, when you get them is so long, we thought it would be wise to just go ahead and order all three of them this time. And it'll be a substantial lag time before we actually receive them.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. Any further discussion? Place your votes.
All votes through.
Votes unanimous. Motion carries. Now, item number eight, discussion, a possible action to adopt ordinance number 3374, amending Article 7, purchasing and bidding of Chapter 7, city finance and business of a Guthrie City Cub, repealing all conflicting ordinances providing perseverance and declaring an emergency. Leroy?
So I put three handouts on your desk. The first one, it says Article 7, purchasing and bidding, is the current ordinance as codified in our Code of Ordinances. The second document that has ordinance number 3374, in the middle of the top of the page, is the ordinance that you would be considering. Rather than read all of the, whereas it's in statutes, I handed out kind of a summary sheet, and that's what I'm gonna make my presentation from. We're amending three sections of this ordinance. The first one, 7-151 exclusion from bid procedure. First, the current language in our existing ordinance is not compatible with the most recent version of the city charter. The language in our current ordinance goes back to a charter from 1990s, and we've had at least two revisions of the charter since then. Purchase contracts excluded from our personal property purchase and bid procedure. One is real property. Real property's governed by Section 2-22, Article 2 in the charter. So it would be excluded from these regulations 'cause it's already covered somewhere else. And then emergency and unusual contracts, that's governed by Section 4.1, Article 4 of the charter. So there's no need duplicating that. That's already in our charter and spelled out what classifies as an emergency or unusual contract in the process you go through. On Section 7152, personal purchases and bidding, the public construction contracts governed by the Public Competitive Bid Act. So we don't, that would supersede any resolution we adopted for purchasing policy. So anything that's defined as a public construction contract would be covered by the state statute for public competitive bidding. Consultants is not a bid process, and that is governed by a state statute Title 6162. So that's already spelled out by state statute on how you obtain consultants. The purchasing policy resolution that we'll bring to the next meeting to update would govern all other purchase contracts except for the ones that were excluded in 7151 and public construction contracts and consultants. So everything else will be covered by the updated resolution we'll be bringing to you next time. City manager's authority is limited to $25,000. Any purchase above that has to come to the city council prior to the order being placed or the contract signed. And a clarification of our ordinance or charter, the city council shall not accept a particular, exempt a particular contract, purchase or sell from the requirement of competitive bidding except as provided herein. So you couldn't say, "Well, this particular project, we're just not gonna competitive bid that." That's what that's saying. In Section 7153, lowest and best bidder governed by the purchasing policy resolution. So there's no need to duplicate it in the ordinance. Right now, it's duplicated, it's two places. So if you amend one, you gotta go back and amend the other. And it's complicated enough, 'cause when you do these and amend them, you gotta look at the state statutes, you gotta look at the charter, you gotta look at the resolutions adopted. So there's no need to have duplication of the same rules and regulations and try to keep up with them. 7151, the limited exclusions. The city manager may authorize payment of payroll, utility bills, and other usual and regular obligations of municipality. So things we pay on a monthly basis, I can authorize. And I can authorize payment of contracts or invoices up to $25,000. Again, anything over $25,000 has to come to the city council. Emergency clause, the reason we're recommending the emergency clause is the Competitive Bid Act has been amended. And this is the first step to allow us to amend our purchasing procedures to accommodate the amended amendment to the Competitive Bid Act. Previously, public construction contracts was $50,000 or more. It has been amended now to $100,000 or more. By making these changes to our purchasing policy we'll present next week, the public work contract up to $100,000 or $100,000 less, whichever way you want it, will provide more flexibility and be conducive to local and small contractors bidding on these projects. One, we can obtain written quotes or bids in lieu of advertising and seed bids. It makes the process simpler. For contracts under $100,000, they will not have to provide a bid bond, and they won't have to provide a performance payment or warranty bond unless we choose to add that to a particular project. So a lot of small contractors, when they bid contractors in projects in this range, we're dealing with contractors that have not established themselves to go out and get performance and payment bonds. So it will open it up to smaller contractors. Many times, when a contractor works on a, a small contractor works on a larger project, they're working for a prime, and the prime does all the bonding. This will have a significant impact. We currently have a grant from the Department of Commerce that has a shelf life or a deadline for completion. So we wanna make sure we get this in place so we can get these projects out to bid within the timeframe we have to implement the grant. And on the back sheet, you can see we have several HVA projects in multiple buildings. They're all under $100,000. We have four buildings we're doing windows. We will now be able to bid those out individually by building, which will allow some of our smaller local contractors to bid on those projects without all the bonding. With rapid inflation, with some of the HVA systems, the delay in getting those, we recommend an emergency clause on this particular ordinance so that we can move on down the road and get these items addressed.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Two motions. The first one will be to approve the ordinance, and the second will be to approve the emergency clause.
Motion's been made in seconded. Any further discussion? Place your votes.
All votes through.
unanimous decision, the amendment or the ordinance carries declaring an emergency.
So move on that one.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Place your votes.
All votes through.
Votes unanimous. Motion carries. Item number 10, correct?
Table.
We'd recommend tableing that tonight. I didn't wanna rush finishing up the purchasing resolution and make some mistakes. So I will have that ready for the next agenda.
All right. And you don't have a city manager's report?
No, sir.
Comments from city council? Does anybody wanna say anything? James, if you'd like to say something, you can say something. Don, how about you?
I'm out.
You're out?
I'm good, too.
Thank you, staff. I appreciate what y'all did tonight. It was...
There we go. We are proud of you, gentlemen. Thank you, gentlemen.